Now live, welcome everyone to this lunchtime live from Zero Waste Leeds's project with the RSA. Looking at how we can have a more sustainable approach to fashion on a city level. And what we need to do to make that happen, of course, we're calling it Leeds Fashion Futures. I'm Peg Alexander, local presenter and journalist. Now, this week is Leeds Fashion Futures Week. A week of events where we're coming together as a city to discover how Leeds can have a vibrant and sustainable fashion future. It's estimated that 4,000 will actually more than 4,000 tonnes of clothes end up in the city's black bins every year. That's roughly about 12 kilos per household per year. And if you try weighing it out, right, it's blooming massive, basically, is the technical term for how much that is. It's absolutely huge. So we're going to be talking about what we can do about that. We're going to be talking about how we can reuse things, how we can reduce that waste, how we can recycle. And we're doing that with our guest, Dr. Councillor Denise Reagan. She is the Lead on Waste for the City Council. She's also the Ward Member for Burnetops in Richmond Hill. And we also have our very own Jill Coopland, as always. Now, we are looking, we are monitoring Facebook. So please, if you've got anything to add, you want to join in the conversation, get your comments on Facebook, get your questions, we'll bring them into the chat. So councillor Reagan, that's quite a job there to be the Lead on Waste. It's obviously the glamorous job that you've got there. Of all the council portfolios, you know, you could have a culture or sports, but you've got waste. But to be, to be fair, all joking aside, you know, in a city that's declared a climate emergency, it's a really important job, you know, like every other city, real challenges around what we do with our waste.
Yeah, it is a challenge. And I think Leeds as a city have made some positive steps towards fulfilling that ambition. And I, as a lead member, working with councillor Afik, who's the executive board member for the Waste Portfolio, I've been given the issue of recycling and really I'm looking forward to how we progress on this. As we've done with plastics, we've made some interesting initiatives with recycling. And I'm hoping that Leeds is going to be in the forefront of the textile recycling as well.
What do we do on the plastic stuff?
Well, we have a partnership with businesses in the city centre where they do not serve plastic straws. They do not serve plastic containers. They have recyclable coffee dispensers. And, you know, that's been a really, a really good initiative. And our, our own Leeds City Council venues, when they were open, they don't serve water in the plastic water bowl. They serve it in reusable, reusable canisters. So I think that's, that's all adding to the, the save the planet blue that David Edinburgh brought in.
Yeah. Do you know what? What's really interesting is that we, you know, in our minds, I think we understand that we need to try and cut back on plastic and single use things. And I think we also understand that, you know, we know where to put that in our, in our green bin and recycling on the go. We can do that in the city centre. And I think that's something that for a lot of people, it is in their mind. And then what I think is a little bit of a disconnect is that people don't apply those same values and behaviours to their clothing choices and to what they do with textiles that have come to the end of their life. You know, we don't apply the same thing. And I think that's what's been interesting is part of our campaign is to try and, and get broaden that awareness that there are, similarly, there are recycling opportunities for your clothes, like there are with your plastic bottles or your Tetra packs.
Yeah. And I think, you know, we haven't got a curbside collection for textiles. And I don't think in the foreseeable future, we'll have that because of the lack of resources and all the rest of it. But I think we are making progress in that we have got recyclable centres where people can go and drop their textiles in there. Yeah. And we've got lots of charity shops in and around Leeds that, you know, we can recycle, people can take there. It's this thing, isn't it, about your, your, your waste is someone else's treasure. And that's the same thing with the clothes, isn't it? It might have served your purpose and you don't no longer want it. But it's something that somebody would, would really want. And Anna as well, you know, you can, there's lots of these charities around that can redesign clothes and can cut them to, to make something else out of it. So, you know, Leeds are promoting that. So, yeah, I think we just need to have a little bit more information where people can take these textiles to.
Yeah. Jill, because you know, that, that figure, the four, it's over 4,000. Actually, the official figure, I think, from the council is that 4,031 tonnes last year ended up in, in black bins. And, and you worked, you worked out that so long. Was it, was it 12?
It's 12, yeah, 12 kilos per household. And we've got a video.
You've weighed that, haven't you?
Yeah, we made a video, like weighing that waste and putting it in a wash basket and weighing that waste. What's really surprising is the amount of textiles clothing you need to get to 12 kilo. It's loads. I mean, it's, it's really a lot. And if you think, like Denise said, we were chatting earlier, if you think about, people, I think they throw, it's so easy to just throw something in your black bin without thinking about it in the hope that somebody somewhere will sort that out. But we've got the, we've got the roof, the energy recovery facility in Leeds where a lot of our black bin waste goes. And we've, we've done a visit to that Zero Waste Leeds, obviously. And it's really, is really interesting. While we were there, the whole production had to come to an absolute halt because some big sheets had got stuck wrapped around the machinery. So textile waste, it doesn't want to be in your black bin for a start off. And there's so many other things you can do with it. But when it ends up at the, at the recovery facility, that's where it's burned essentially. You know, it can cause such a massive problem there, shut the whole production down.
Yeah, yeah.
And of course it can be reused.
Yeah. The big thing is education, isn't it? The big thing is educating people. Into, you know, what, what usage your unwanted textiles can be to somebody else. And that, that's the gap that we need to try and fill is educating people in what they can do with it.
Yeah. Because actually, it's actually, once you understand, it's actually quite easy. So tomorrow on Facebook at one o'clock, I'm going to be doing a little whiz through our new fashion map. So that, the map, it's got, it's got so much great stuff on. So it's got lists, it's got, you can locate all of the charity shops in Leeds. So if you've got clothes that you've worn and, and they've served their purpose, you've been to a few weddings in it or whatever, you've worn it to the office a million times, but it's got life left in it and you could pass it on to somebody else. You know, there's a really vibrant secondhand sector in these two, the charity shops, and they need that stuff. You know, they've been closed for such a long time. They've lost out a huge amount of revenue. We've all, you know, got time on our hands during lockdown, clearing cupboards out. I know we're kind of a bit sick of that now. But, you know, we've all kind of gone through that. But they are going to, there are so many places you can pass that stuff on, number one, and they're all on the map, but also choose to go and shop there yourself. That's the other thing. And, and but then for textiles that have just got to completely the end of the life, they're beyond repair. You know, it's, you can't repair that. It's not just a case of sewing a hole up or a button on or whatever. We've got textile banks all across the city. They're on the map. There will definitely be one near you. And that's where your textiles that have really come to the end of their life can end up and be recycled into something else. And locally, in a lot of cases, like mattress stuffing and soundproofing for cars, you know, some of that is done, they're collected locally and some of that is done locally. So there are so many options and it's actually quite easy. You just need to know where they are and what to do with it.
Right. That's, that's exactly right. Yeah.
Yeah. Cindy says on Facebook, which is, which is a kind of a sad comment, really, with the charity shops closed though, people skip it rather than taking it back to donate at a later date. And obviously our plea would be, yeah, maybe it's a little bit frustrating to have something in the house or the flat until they open again. But please keep on to some of the stuff. Because, you know, when, when we're all going to be going out partying, not, but you know, when the party starts again, or whenever it is in July or June or whatever it is, and we're all going to want some new outfits, because obviously we don't fit anything that people can be bothered to me. And we decide, I'm getting out of leggings, I'm going to put something on my bottom half, go to the charity shops together, you know. That, that's got to be the answer.
Yeah. There's nothing I, I like better than going to a dress agency or a charity shop and picking, picking a bargain up that's been a designer in a previous life and, and getting something that's worth 500 quid for a tenner. It's, you know, it gives you that so much buzz. And I think that's what we need to be promoting a lot more in, in that, you know, it's not a place for worn out dingy things. It's a place where you can find some real good high street bargains.
And of course, of course, the future of fashion is now all about the neckline, right? And that's where it's going to be. So Jill, looking at yours, and this jumper's got a lovely neckline. And this jumper was 150 from a charity shop. So if you just hold on, things come back around.
Yeah, no, they do. Absolutely. And it is, I mean, you know, what on, on the textile map, what's, because I know what people who really love a charity shop, they like to be able to browse through a few. So on, on the map, it'll show you where there's a few come together and you could go and have a real lovely, you know, spend an afternoon rummaging through. But I think you're right Denise, that, that they're not the place for, you know, dark and dingy things anymore. They've come on a lot, they've come out in leaps and bounds charity shops. And a lot of them have become really good at selling online because obviously they're closed. So again, something on our Zero Waste Fashion site is a list of all of the eBay shop for all of the local Leeds charity shops. So you can carry on supporting them during lockdown because you can buy online. And I think, once they've made that switch, it's, it, online, you've got to really sell your garment. You've got to make it look nice. You've got to do a really good description. And some of them are absolutely brilliant at doing that. So there's loads of opportunities to still support them during lockdown. But obviously, if we've got stuff, and it is difficult, but if you can hang on to it until they reopen to.
Olivia, Olivia says on Facebook, she agrees, I think she was agreeing with you Denise, you can find some real gems. See, I've got people who swear by different areas. So they say, do you know what I mean? If I'm after a bit more funky, I'll pop up headingly. That, I mean, that's what I do. You know, it's great, headingly. I mean, it's just charity shop after charity shop in the first bit or by the skyrack up that bit. Honestly, it's cracking. And other people have said, I'm feeling a bit posh, I'll go up round Diora, go to North Town. And then someone else on those squares by Eden High Street as well says, that's really good. Ottley's quite good for more designer type stuff. Do you know what I mean? So if you go, yeah, go different places. You can get your different kind of clothes.
Yeah, exactly. And your accessories as well. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. You can pick all of that up at the same time.
Yeah. One of the things that was, was really successful, we launched it last summer, so like, you know, in the, in the gap between lockdowns was Leeds School Uniform Exchange. And I know the Leeds City Council was really supportive of that. And part of our challenge there was to try and get people to understand that there's this massive resource in our city, particularly because this year kids haven't really been at school. So they've grown out of the stuff that's not been, it's not worn out, it's just grown out. And so we had a lot of that donated and we'll, we'll do the same this summer where there'll be a lot of really good quality secondhand school uniform available. And, and it can genuinely be, secondhand can be your first choice when it's, when it comes to school uniform. And this year, there's, there's absolutely mountains of it. And that's just, it's a really good, and it, it's a really good initiative to try and get people to sort of make that switch in the head. It's not, it's, it's not just about secondhand and all the stigma and, and difficult connotations that come with that. It's that this is a resource that exists in our city, it's great quality. It saves me money from buying new. And it means I can be more sustainable if I'm using something that exists already before buying something new. That's me doing my bit, helping, you know, our city towards a zero carbon future, whatever. And just by choosing secondhand school uniform.
I think you mentioned a really good point there about stigma. I think a lot of people have had, have got this feeling that if you're getting secondhand or you're getting charity textiles, there's a stigma there of you can't afford new. And we've, we've got to get out of that. We've got to get out of, you know, what's the point in buying new if you can get as just as good, if not even better sometimes, quality used textiles? And that, that's key, that's key to the school uniform issue, isn't it?
Just to say, there is a lot of love for Ottley and Ilkley on Facebook here. Yeah. Get yourself up to Ilkley, you can have a nice day out. You might have to get a takeaway cream tea from Betis because obviously it's illegal to go to Ilkley. A Yorkshire rascal from Betis. Go to the charity shop because it is pretty good, Ilkley, to be fair. You do get pretty good expensive stuff. Beth's also saying it's really about education to consumers. So many of my friends don't know the destroying effects of those consumer waste and the amount that ends up in the black bin. And I think that's really true as well. No, Jill, we were chatting, when we were chatting with Jenny Whisker the other day, she was talking about. And, and I didn't realise this about just how much plastic as well, there is in different clothes. And so we don't always realise what it is that we're throwing in the bin. Yeah. But talking about challenging stigma, I was just going to say Denise there, one of the things I'm quite impressed with is that, you know, so the roof, right, that, I mean, anyone who doesn't know, it's down across screen and it's the most amazing building. I've seen that the roof is now starting to, to pop up on all the cartoons and drawings of the skyline of Leeds. That's what we're doing. Got, you know, the corn exchange, the town hall, you know, the town hall, the most magnificent town hall building that there is in the country, you know, the corn exchange, wonderful Parkinson building, the Dalek. And then the, the waste recovery place, because it just, because it's such an amazing building, isn't it? There you go. If we, we can make that trendy, we can make anything trendy.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, I mean, it's got that lovely outside growing wall, hasn't it? That's, that's key to sort of recycling and friendly. So, yeah.
Yeah. You can see it from a distance as well. I'll see what they do. There's no, up to that bit across green where it is, there's no, it's really flat, which is quite unusual for, for most of Leeds. So it's really flat and you can see right over to it.
A shrine from my, yeah.
It is a really impressive building. I've never thought about it like that either Peg, that, you know, it, it could, it's sort of iconic status on part of the Leeds skyline, just might, might, yeah, change our opinion of it. But it, yeah, is a, it is a really beautiful building. And, you know, the, the point about black bin waste going there, some of which, I have to tell you, is it is filtered and as much as it can is recycled. It doesn't just all go to feed the furnace. But the thing about it, it being burned is that then that's, that's going to be turned into community energy. So there's.
It is Leeds pipes, yeah, the Leeds pipes initiative, which is, which is the looking at fewer poverty, isn't it? And it's, it's creating that, that affordable heating and hot water for a lot of our deprived communities, which is a really good, it's a really good byproduct out of that, that issue.
Yeah. And I mean, that just reminds me, I was thinking of that when we talked about it earlier. But, you know, it's dead easy to think that some of the textiles that we've got can't be reused. But a few years ago, I mean, this was maybe, I'm just trying to think, it was probably sort of five, six years ago. But I did some work on an amazing project in Bradford, the Warm Homes Healthy People Project. And that research there found loads of families saying that they didn't have enough duvets. You know, that there were families in Bradford who, where the kids didn't have a proper duvet or blanket on their beds and they were sleeping under clothes to keep.
Yeah. I mean, that's going back to pre-war, isn't it? I remember my grandma, you know, not having any heating and using big overcoats for blankets on the bed and also cutting up clothing to do the old, the old rag rugs.
Yeah. Yeah. That's right. So that project was buying duvets and stuff for people, for families that didn't have. But so to think, would someone throw out a duvet when someone else doesn't even have the warmth of the duvet at night?
Yeah. No, you're absolutely right. And what you just said there Denise as well, that, I think that's part of the reason why one of the themes was heritage and tradition is because I think you can learn a lot by looking back. And if you look back to how, you know, like, I always say this about my mum, we didn't have a lot of money growing up. And my mum used to knit a lot. So a lot of our jumpers were knitted by my mother. And then when we'd grown out of them, she pulled it out and knitted it in something else. And, and, you know, there was a lot of that. You, you had to use the resources that you had and because you didn't have the money to buy other things. And we've, we've got into a bit of a, you know, buy it now, need it now, buy cheap, you know, clothing. It's that part of the problem is that, is that some clothing is so cheap as to make it comparable to going and buying secondhand. You know, the, the Primarts and the Boohoo and the ASOS and everything of this world. It's, it's so cheap. And, and I think, but it's not cheap in terms of the cost to our environment, is it? And that's what people don't understand. They just look and see a t-shirt for 150 or something and think that's the value of it. But it, it's really.
I'll have one in, I'll have one in every colour.
Yeah.
I do sometimes wonder when I bought Primax, I have bought Primax stuff from charity shops. And I sometimes wonder if I'm paying more for it in the charity shop. But I don't mind because, you know, that's, that's the point of it.
Yeah. The charity's point, yeah. Yeah. But we've kind of, we've, we've got into this culture of particular, I mean, I think young people are divided. There's lots of young people who are very concerned about the environment. But there's lots of younger people who were, who were caught up in the Instagram culture of once you've, you've put your outfit on Instagram, you can't wear it again because everyone's seen it. And it didn't cost you very much anyway in Primark. So you, you kind of, you're like not bothered. And there's just this massive disconnect between the, the cost of the item and the, and the carbon cost of that item, which is huge. And people just don't, don't understand, I think.
Yeah, absolutely. So moving forward then for Leeds, what's next Denise? What, what else can we be doing? What, what's next for us? I mean, obviously we've got, I presume you'll be keeping the school, the school uniform exchange going, Jill?
Yeah, I think they're looking at now, working with our sports people in, into doing a similar type programme in around reusing sportswear. Jill, do you want to, do you want to just say a little bit more about?
We've been chatting with Yorkshire Sport for a while. So I think we were, we were thinking to ourselves, right? So if there's a resource like school uniform in our city, we can unlock that and pass it on. How brilliant is that? What other things could we apply that to? And actually, when you start thinking about it, there's loads of things you could apply that to. And one of the things is sports kit and equipment. And that came from a conversation with some of our community groups that run schemes called Healthy Holidays, where they provide activities and food for children during the holidays. And they were saying, some of our children turn up and they've just not got the right kit that they've failed to participate. So we were wondering whether we could unlock that as well, you know, again, looking at a resource in our city, sports kit and equipment, boots, trainers, whatever, could we get donations of them in and then make sure that goes out to children who need it? But beyond that, again, they tried to remove it away from it being children in poverty who need this stuff. Could we just be a more sustainable city by sharing the resources that exist in our city? So opening sport up to that. And I think the other thing that's really interesting is for a lot of kids, joining the sport club can make a real massive difference to their life because they've got access to a network there that they don't have in any other area of their life. But if the barrier to joining that club is that you've not got the boots or the trainers, and all we've got to do is open that up and get you the boots and the trainers. And then you're off and it can make a real difference to your life. So that's in development now. And I know Neil Domes from Active Leeds is really keen to get that going. And he's putting a call out for his staff within the council to, to ask friends and family for donations of sport kit and equipment so that we can get something started off. And there are some brilliant examples as well of, we've got a teacher in South Leeds and a guy who runs some sports activities in Richmond Hill. And they saw the need for the children that they're working with, they didn't have the right stuff. They put a call out for, for trainers and boots and they've been inundated. They've proved this and they've proved that there's a model there and bless him, Sean, the teacher, he's got 400 pairs of boots and trainers and he's locked and kids lining up knocking on his front door saying, can I have a car? So we just need to make that, make that available.
I'd like to see that extended to, to older people as well, because we've got an initiative where we've got to try and work with public health to get more active. And it's sometimes, isn't it, for people, like you say, with the children with the sport, sometimes the older people don't want to get involved in walking or running because I haven't got the right. You know, you can't go play tennis in a pair of stiletto heel shoes, can you? Well, some can, but, you know, let, let's, let's look at it positively. So I, I think we need to look at how we can evolve that project around for everybody, whatever age, so that the, the equipment is there for everybody to take part in.
Yeah. Brilliant idea. So let's watch this space on that.
Open it up. So, yeah, I mean, if you think about, there's a really good bike exchange in South Carlisle. You know, that's the thing, he's, he's unlocking that, isn't he? You know, the bike in the garage that your kid, your child's grown out of, you know, pass it on to someone else. I do think it's really interesting when we look at the resources, just that already exists in our city, just unlock them and get them out to, so that people can have them instead of buying in something new.
Yeah, definitely. Absolutely. And it is using, you know, social media gives us the opportunity and, you know, and I think I was saying, you know, just things like, so my, I went to, I decided I had to get on the scales this week.
Oh, don't, don't go.
I put it off, I put it off. Anyway, so long since I've been on the scales, the blooming things weren't working and all the batteries, you know, it leaks all over it. So I really don't want to buy some scales. So I put it on one of the lists. Within a few minutes, I've been offered some scales. And, you know, it's just little things like that. You just think that if we just get in the habit of doing stuff. And I got a bonus trip to East of the Road as well.
Yeah. Do you know, like an adventure. Those local Facebook groups are an absolutely brilliant resource in our city. I'm in too, local to me. And we did a garage clear out the other day. So I just took a quick photograph of filing cabinet and an office chair, something else. Got them on Facebook and they were picked up within an hour. I mean, I didn't want them, they're in my garage. It's someone local, you know, they've not got to travel far and I got rid of them.
Fabulous idea.
Dead easy, dead easy. Yeah, really great. Just before we finish, Olivia says she loves the story of your mum and the jumper.
Everybody loves that story. She did. So, so she used to sit in the chair there pulling it out and I used to sit here.
Yeah. Were you not having to sit like that though with her?
Oh, yeah.
Do you, do you remember that Denise? It's a little girl having to sit like that.
Balls of war, because you used to get in a yard.
Yeah.
I do, yeah. Can I put my arms down, Mam, today?
No, no, because I'm not finished yet. Yeah. Well, sometimes you turn the chair upside down. Turn the chair upside down. So I don't have to sit like that. Yeah. Olivia, she says, people are conditioned to think you knew his best and don't think of the whole supply chain.
Taking buttons off things as well. I remember cutting buttons off things and using them again.
Everybody loves it. Because we did a post about a button tin. And, and it's the kind of thing that's passed down through generations.
Oh, everybody's got a button tin.
Button tins, brilliant.
Yeah. My nan's, my mother's, me. Not that I'm throwing any buttons on, I have to tell you, but I've got the tin with the buttons. And it is, it's a lovely thing, a real tactile, beautiful thing.
Because the lovely buttons, aren't they? A lot of them are really good, good quality. Because the stuff that you buy now is very synthetic material, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah. I'll tell you what, I did, I did dive into the button tin for, I made my own Christmas jumper. I know everybody knows about my Christmas jumper.
Because it was all over television, wasn't it Jill?
My Christmas jumper is quite famous. And this year I made, I just got all the gold buttons out of the tin and made a tree, a tree shade. It took me ages, can't tell you how long to sew all those buttons on. Somebody else would have done it in five minutes. But there you go, recycling in action.
Exactly. Actually making it happen. It's been a really, really good chat. We've got to finish. Thank you everyone as well who's joined in the chat on Facebook. We love it when you do it because it makes it, you know, more interactive. We're in Leeds Fashion Futures Week, been activities and events all week. What's next coming up Jill? Is it your talk with Matt?
Tomorrow we're doing the chat through the updated Leeds Fashion Map, which is great. That's at one o'clock. On Thursday evening, for all of those people who don't have the skills and experience to add a thread and needle, sew a button on, sew a hole up, we're doing, there's a live Q and A on.
I've got to, I've got to tell a bit of a story about this. So earlier, me and Susan from Zero Waste Leeds, we went live to test how we can do bits of the live Q and A. And I had, I had no makeup on or anything and just was scruffy because I had to go to the hospital this morning. Anyway, and then I put on Facebook, this is a test, do not watch. And somebody, somebody came in and went, well, of course I'm going to watch. This is a test, do not watch.
That's what we need to do. Well, do watch Thursday, late, live Q and A. You can learn some new skills. And I'm sure it'll just be so much fun. That's what we need to do. Well, do watch Thursday, late, live Q and A. You can learn some new skills and I'm sure it'll just be so much fun.
Wonderful. We've got, we've got amazing people there and they're all going to bring stuff as well. And as I say, we've been practising holding things to the screen so you can see how they're doing it. And you can ask, ask any question that you want to ask and we'll all be chatting away. It should be really great fun. Councillor Denise Reagan, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. I've thoroughly enjoyed.
Good. It's, it's always good when people enjoy it. Thanks Jill. And as I say, you say you'll be doing your talk for the map tomorrow. And thank you everybody on Facebook as well. And, and people have read, to say, we've got some nice comments. People have really enjoyed this chat. So thanks. Keep on being amazing and we'll see you all soon.
Thank you. Bye.